Welcome to the Corey Valley Board of School Directors meeting. Now, rise and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, so approval of the agenda.
Can I add some stuff? I'd like to talk about something and put it under old business, where we talked about having a meeting with the lawyer. I'd like to put something under new business to have, maybe just talk a little bit about the articles of agreement and the bylaws of the GRC issue. And, okay. And also I've got some stuff, maybe under executive session. Just some things that came up at the GRC issue, but can't be talked about.
Okay. All right. So the agenda's approved? In favor?
Yeah, to make a motion. I'll make a motion.
Motion, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, general public comments?
All right, so I have members of the West Rutland Senior Class Leadership Team, along with their advisor, Ms. Taylor, and they are here to ask for board permission to travel out of state for their senior class trip. And they wanted to come and be able to answer any questions. It's in my principal's report that they are traveling to Orlando, Florida, April 30th to May 4th. And they have been fundraising, and I have listed the cost per pupil to go on the trip. And they wanted to make sure, because of the money and plans, et cetera, that permission was given to them ahead of time. So I asked them to come, and they willingly came, or mostly willingly came to answer any questions that you may have. So I don't know if anybody from the senior class has extra information. You guys have been doing a tremendous amount of fundraising, making sure everyone has the ability to go.
How many of you are going? How many are in your class?
There's 29 in the class, 24 are going.
And how many chaperones are going?
There are four chaperones that are going.
And how are you getting to the airport? You came, I'm gonna ask you a question.
Probably a bus.
Probably a bus, yeah.
I mean, we're still playing with that idea. We're thinking maybe parents might be willing to park for us, so we don't have to pay for parking.
Sure.
Possible bus, but we're still ironing out that detail.
I'll make a motion to approve the West Rutland Senior Class Trip to Orlando. And if you need a chaperone, I would probably help.
That's part of the official motion. We could just approve it.
Sounds like fun.
All right, so motion's been made. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Looks like you're going to Florida.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys are free to leave. Thank you.
Chris, did you see Rebecca's note? Chris, did you see Rebecca's note?
Yes, I did. Thank you.
Never mind.
Okay, consent agenda. Approval of minutes?
I just have one thing. Under page seven, it says Polton High School Joe DeBonnis was not in attendance at this meeting. And I just would like to add, because he was at an open house at Polton High School.
He still wasn't at the meeting. He still wasn't at the meeting.
Correct, but I just want to add that.
All right.
Thanks.
Okay, so approval of the minutes now?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Mike made a motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of warrants?
So moved.
So moved. Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Jessica. I have just three items to discuss with you, mostly informational. In your packets in the Board of Resource folder, there are placed two items. One is a board communication plan. It's part of the, my goals that were co-developed with the Executive Committee. One of the goals is around how the superintendents can best support the boards in communicating the budget with communities. And so I have drafted this communication plan used with all the local boards. The intent was not to have five different communication plans, one for the SU and one for each of our four local boards, but to have a common approach with each of our districts, understanding that the needs of Corey Valley might be a little bit different than, say, Rutland Town, or Wells, or Ira, or the SU. But there'll be some flexibility there. So it's there for your review. If there are any questions about that or materials that you feel are necessary, please just reach out to myself or to our board chair, vice chair, and we can make amendments to that. The second item that was placed in there was around the FAQs. This is not a complete document. I know that last year people had talked about having more of an FAQ, just informational for individuals, just around budgeting. So I began compiling a list of questions that were asked last year, that I reached out to other superintendents to see what sort of questions were asked from their local communities, as well as just general things I thought might be useful to start us off. So, sorry. So then what will happen is, this is a starting document. We are going to be placing on our budget website a link where community members, board members, anyone can submit a question. And our plan would be, whether it be myself, Louis, or whoever might be best to answer the question, Director of Student Sports, that we'll have a 48 to 72-hour turnaround on that question, and then it will join the list of questions. So we'll have this running list of questions for individuals. If there is a Corey Valley-specific question, then we will place that under Corey Valley. We'll have kind of placed that, because I know that there are people who have very specific questions about, say, Rutland Town or Corey Valley. And so therefore, we can just direct it, place it there. So this is something which we've been working on. We'll continue to update as well. So if there are items on there that you feel need to be addressed, obviously just let us know, and we can put that in there as well. And like I said, our goal is not to have long, lengthy answers. We will be establishing, or publishing links and directing people to where they can find information, particularly, you know, the AOE has some good stuff on there. Vermont Leagues, the Cities and Towns has some good information as well. So we will help direct them, because it's not meant to be a long scroll-in document. It really is more just a quick reference for them to have. The last piece of information is not in your report, but last week, the superintendents of the Southwest Vermont Superintendent Association which comprises Rutland Northeast, Slate Valley, Rutland City, A.M., Mill River. Bennington, Rutland did not join us just because of geography, they're a little bit far away. But the superintendents, as well as board chairs from the SUs and the STs, met with Secretary Saunders, Deputy Secretary Jill Briggs Campbell, and other representatives of the AOE, just kind of talked about, you know, state to state, looking at budgets. It was a good discussion. The information that was shared in the meeting is not meant for public consumption at this time, so I can't really go into details with the information that was shared. But I want to let the board know, as well as those who are watching on PIG TV, is that on October 28th, there will be a public engagement session. And I'll have more information as soon as, I spoke with Courtney O'Brien, emailing back and forth about this. But, so I'll be emailing this out and sending it out to board members and community members. But on October 28th, there will be two sessions on that date, from 3:30 to 5:30. It looks like it's going to be for staff. And that's for educational staff only. It's not, you pick which one you want to go to. So for teachers, you know, other staff members who were not able to attend last week. And then from 6:00 to 8:00, that'll be open to all community members, so board, parents. And that will be held at West Rutland. I know it's centrally located. You know, we want to thank West Rutland for hosting last week. They do a very nice job of hosting. It's a nice facility that, like I said, is centrally located for community members.
At the high school? At the school, not here.
It's at West Rutland High School.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yep. Will that be recorded? No. So, just because of the way the meeting will be, there will be a general meeting, there'll be breakout sessions. It's gonna be very difficult to have Zoom links for that, so. So if there are any other questions, I'll be more happy to answer them. But that's all I really had. So outside of budgetings. Get ready for budgetings.
I just wanted to say that. I scanned the communication plan. And I just really, anyway, I just really appreciated in general having that. It looks really proactive, engaging the community. It sounds like as soon as this month in, you know, opportunities to participate in the budget process and understanding what's being undertaken. So just, I really appreciated that, yeah.
All right, anyone else? No? All right. We'll get on the principal's report. Who's up?
I have a request in my report that I would like to ask. My AP and US history teacher would like to take his classes to Boston to see the Freedom Trail. The date on there is actually no longer. The company moved us to November 1st. But I would like to ask permission to take our students out of state. We also reached out to West Rutland and to their US history AP teacher, and they might also be coming with us as well.
Yep.
Is this the one day down and back?
It's just the one day down and back. So we'll leave around 6:00, 6:30, and be back around 8:00, 8:30.
Charter bus or?
No, just regular.
How many people going?
We have 17. And then West Rutland, depending on playoffs and everything else, will be between like six more up to, it sounded like 16 more, so.
16?
Yep. Six to 16. It's a playoff day. So it depends on sports, and there's a lot of those student athletes.
Nobody in Polton wanted to go?
Well, once we were at, if we are at both of those numbers, we will have a full bus that we wouldn't be able to take anymore.
All right.
You need a motion for that?
Yes, I do.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, Mike makes a motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay.
I'll go next. You have my report in the drive. I just wanted to highlight, what's not in here is students and staff leadership. That's really been taking off. Kids have been coming with ideas and solutions to things in the school that they'd like to see improved. And staff has stepped up to start offering their own knowledge on courses they have been taking or, you know, moving the culture in the building, too. So it's definitely worth a walk-through to see what's been going on. And I did include something that I hadn't before, just how the staff is starting to recognize the great work that each other are doing when they don't get to see it. We spend a lot of our staff meetings talking about the great work that kids do, and I thought it was important that the board see what the folks are thinking about their own colleagues in the building as well. So I won't include that all the time, but first month and a half new staff into the building, I thought it was really great to have as many nominations as we did for celebrating. And that's something that Jen and I both do in our buildings, is recognize staff each month, so.
Nice.
Important to share, so.
I guess I'm next.
Sure.
We also do, I call them praises and positives. We start every faculty meeting off with shout-outs. And sometimes it becomes more like a love fest, but it's actually a really good, positive experience. A couple of things I wanted to highlight. We did successfully pull off Weather at Your School on Channel 5. I don't even remember when. It was earlier in October. I was on at 6 o'clock in the morning, and we ended up having a good group of kids. And they talked also about, actually several of the student athletes that were here were also on the news for talking about homecoming. And I wanted to also give the board two positives. So we are slated. The roof and those drains are being cleaned later this month. So thank you again. And also, the electrical panel boxes were, and that work, that's a major job. We have secured our electrician, and we are working on a couple of final parts to it. These are sub-panel boxes, or panel boxes, that are about six feet tall. These are not residential. So getting something like that is hard. So we're working with the electrical engineer, because what we originally were looking for was going to be about 11 months out to get. And if we went to a couple of other models, we could actually expedite it to just a couple of months. So we're also trying to find a time where we can shut power off to the building. So it's obviously going to be over a break. And we'll do it during the daytime and then get everything up and running. It should not affect the furnaces either. So lots of good things going on, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Appreciate the love.
Thank you.
All right, so, no questions?
So Polton High School, just a couple of things in the report that aren't in the report. One of them, we are doing a, first time we're doing a mentoring program, where some of our juniors and seniors are going down one day a week to the elementary school to work with the younger kids down there. Something Kristen and I have talked about and finally put it into place. And our new associate principal, athletic director, Mr. Dudzak's been a busy guy. Lot of new things. We just did our inaugural Hall of Fame, and we elected the Catmans. Dave and Maureen both went in there, and that's something that, you know, we plan on doing yearly. But, you know, just some of new things like that. And Saturday, we have something a little different. Our home football game is at Castleton University, under the lights. Again, something that, you know, he and the coaches have talked about. And so we're doing a lot of different things there. And, you know, our homecoming was great. Everybody, both teams won that day. The homecoming dance was uneventful, as far as I was concerned. So that was always a good thing. So, yeah.
Great.
What time's that game, Joe?
7 o'clock.
And Kristen, Calgeri apologizes. She had a family engagement, so she's gonna be here tonight, so.
All right. Old business. Polton Tennis Court Basketball Court Repair Update?
I have been engaged with other things. So I haven't had a chance to speak with Sarah Pelkey. But we're supposed to meet, like, next week. So I'll have a report for the board after that. I'm hoping that we can find some grant money to take care of both Procter and Polton's courts. I think that would be great, if we could figure that out.
My thing is, and I can't remember if it was August or September, I've been going online and listening into the GRC SU board meetings. And somebody had mentioned in the board meeting that there was something on the resource area for GRC SU. So I tried to access that, and because I did not know you can't access if you're not a board member, and it shut me down completely on my computer, and I missed the meeting trying to figure out what was going on. So Chris and I had some discussion about how, you know, if you're not, I don't want to be a voting member. I just wanted to be able to get into the resource area to see what everybody, you know. As a board member, I don't think, I'm like a member of the public. I've signed things that said, you know, I'll do what I need to do. So Chris reached out to Tina and Eric, and Tina sent me an email that basically says you can't really get into it, and it's too much trouble to try to make it. There's not enough staff to really put things out to people. And I wrote her, and I said, "Well, I'm waiting for the VSB to tell me if there's a law that says that any board member can't be part of at least reading the resources in the area, even if it's sensitive." Because you've, like I said, you've signed a thing that says. And basically, Sue Seglowski, who is the head of the VSB, sent me an email back and just said, "This is not something we can tell you. My suggestion to you is to, you need to speak with your board's lawyer to see if..." So I did have to go to a GRC SU board meeting because, to fill in for Eric. So we had somebody, which was very nice of Jess and Tom, to say, you know, "You probably should go, because it'll be, you'll at least have a Poltony board member from Corey Valley." So thank you for that. And...
In August, you were voted as the alternate. So the board did make a motion. When you had stepped down, they made a motion to have you be the alternate as well. So you didn't need authorization. You are the identified alternate as, as in the minutes as well, so.
Right. So if there's an alternate, I don't know why I couldn't get into GRC SU. So I have two motions I'd like to make. One is that I'd like to move to have the lawyer come to our next November meeting. I don't know if I can say the second one at the same time. Do we have to talk about that one first?
It should be separate.
Okay. So I'd like to make a motion to have the lawyer come to the November meeting to discuss that part of why board members cannot get into their supervised reunion resource area.
By computer? He doesn't have to drive here, right? Or she?
Right.
Come via computer.
Why can't we just have our superintendent speak to the attorney and ask the question and provide written documentation with respect to it? I, it seems like this has grown into something huge, for some reason, which I'm not really sure why.
Well, I think if people are interested on boards, why can't they read stuff? I don't understand. We want people to be interested in things that are going on. So what is it that is so important that a board member cannot get into a resource area?
So I want to clarify first. A board member does have access to all materials. You know, they can request a copy of the packet. I know Lenny do that regularly, where Christine will print off a packet. Even on that night, she had printed off a packet, but weren't able to come in and pick it up.
Yep.
The issue with the resource folder is that when we place executive session materials, it's one folder. So a board member would have access to all materials within that folder. And so therefore, even if you look at the GRC SU bylaws 1.1, it does say that any member, the local district board member can attend a GRC board, but they'll attend as a member of the public, not as a member of that board. And so you'll have access to all these materials. But what we've had an issue with is if there's executive session materials about, say, a Rutland Town employee or an Ira, you know, it would be Ira or Wells Springs employee, anyone outside that GRC SU board should not be able to access that material. And that's part of the problem with that resource. So you have access to all the materials, just like any other member of the public has access to. But the problem with the resource folder is the executive session folder is placed in there as well, and there's no way to only give you access to only this folder, not the folder. It's all going to be for, that's the issue. So it's not preventing someone, so when you say we don't have access, everyone has access to every single material that is presented here. They just have to, you know, call, request it, and Christine will send it off. It's, the issue is with the resource folder, the way it's set up. And there's, you know, and talking with Milton and Greg, it's, there's no way for them to do it where you can give access only to this and not to that, unless set up a whole, separate document or dump it ground. The other solution we looked at was, there's a, it's called Board Docs. It's a company where we can, you know, pay $9,000 each year, which would allow a member of the board to actually click on links during the meeting and access. But I don't know if that's money we really want to spend as we're looking at a tough budget cycle, but that's out there. So it's, board members do have access. That is the issue with that. And so when we have alternates, when you're there serving, then you have access to that folder. So when you were there, you had access to it.
I did not have access to a folder.
I'll talk to Christine, because Christine said to make sure you have access to that folder, so.
Yeah. And that's the point, is that, you know, I went in, and I didn't have access to it. And if I, I didn't want to try it again...
At the last GRC SU board meeting, you didn't have access to it?
No. That's why I came over and talked to you that I didn't have access. And you said I needed Corey Valley's permission to...
No, you had said, okay, we're not gonna go into what, what, that was not my record of the conversation. The conversation was really in terms of you stepping in for Eric. And I said, "Well, let's make sure that..."
Right. And I said, "I don't have access to the GRC issue." So I thought, "Well, let's offer it to everybody." Why is it so, I mean, what am I gonna do with the information, even if it's in executive session?
It sounds like the Google Drive folder is a matter of convenience, that the materials are available via paper, right? If requested. The Google Drive pieces is more of a convenience piece. And, I mean, I can second what Chris is saying, because I manage a whole ratsnesting Google Drive infrastructure for work. And the way that the permission structures work in Google Drive is not very friendly. So there is a technical component to that.
If there's a way we can limit access, then we have a public folder that people can access, but we don't have, it is all one big folder. So it's not trying to prevent one individual from accessing materials. Like I said, anybody who wants to access materials can call, request that, and we'll provide that. And Christine will print off, copy that. But the issue is, as Sarah said, the way it's set up is when you have an executive session, But the issue is, as Sarah said, the way it's set up is when you have an executive session, a known executive session, and we have materials in there that that's not for public consumption, and anyone who's not a voting member of the board, as per our agreement, is considered as public, and that's in 1.1. So therefore, they should not be able to access. It doesn't mean if you signed off on a folder or not. It really is about, you know, there's certain legal considerations, concerns around it. And that's not saying we don't trust you or anyone else, but it's just, we don't know what happens with that. And that's something, we just have to limit that. So that's something which I think the G R C S U board could discuss as well, because that's, you know, that's a G R C S U discussion, not just a Corey Valley discussion.
Yeah. Because it does say, it says, "All members of the school boards of the school districts comprising of the G R C S U may attend as members of the public."
Correct. So members of the public don't have access to the executive session materials.
Okay. So we can talk about that when we talk about the bylaws of G R C S U. Okay.
There's a whole process to change any bylaws, correct?
You have to, the G R C S U board, it has to be discussed at the G R C S U board, and then they would have to then rightly request the State Board of Education to amend or change any of our bylaws.
Okay.
Great. Yeah. Thanks. Okay. All right. Moving on.
So.
We made a motion.
Are we bringing the attorney to this meeting?
But your census.
Do you want to withdraw the motion?
Well, how does everybody else feel? I mean, I'm not, if nobody else wants it to me, then we don't do it. But who else?
I mean, honestly, I think that it doesn't really make sense for us to pay to have the lawyer show up for this, but it sounds like it's going to be a lengthy process and something that's likely not going to change anything, to me.
In order for it to change, it has to go to the A O E.
Right. And I just don't foresee that changing, honestly.
Well, it'd have to go to the G R C S U board first.
And then the A O E.
Then it would have to go to the State Board of Education.
Yep. So we would have to vote on the change, we'd have to vote in favor of the change, and then it would go to the A O E.
And the reality is, if you want a packet, you just have to ask for a packet, and you can receive one, minus any executive session material.
Right. But that wasn't my point.
Any person can access that.
That wasn't my point, though.
I know.
I was asking for board members of how they, how people felt as a discussion about being able to access everything, no matter which board you're on, as a board member, to the G R C S U. Not that you could vote, but that you could access. That's all I was asking.
I understand the voting concept. I'm saying you can still ask and have access to a packet, you just have to request that.
Minus the executive session materials. I personally don't feel like I need access to the G R C S U.
And it'd be considered public based on our bylaws. So it's mute, it's a mute fact.
There's things that I read in the bylaws that I would like to have changed as well. But that's, I think what everybody's saying is that that's, we have to bring that before G R C S U and get approval at that board level before it can even go to the A O E for approval.
Right. I was just bringing it up to our board. That's all. That's all I was doing. Okay.
So is the motion, are you going to rescind the motion?
Yes.
So you don't want me to bring, see if Chris Lebock will attend our next board meeting? Just want to make sure. Because that was part of your.
What was that?
You do not want me to have the lawyer, our attorney, attend our next meeting?
Is, right, nobody else wanted it. So, yeah.
Okay. Just want to make sure.
Okay. Tom?
You got to go through G R C S U, correct?
No, not to get the lawyer. That was about the bylaws.
Well, the lawyer would be, would it still need to speak to the G R C S U, I think would be the most appropriate place to, because I think your concern was around the legality of omitting a member of the public from accessing a board, board documents, including executive session materials.
Right.
Which I know what the attorney is going to say around executive session materials and members of the public. So if you're not a voting member, you're a member of the public, as per our bylaws, which, you know, nobody's going to say, but I think that would be something which, if the G R C S U board would feel the need to have the attorney there to speak about executive session, even tonight, we have an executive session, we still have to look at the, there are very specific rules in terms of what we can and cannot do in executive session. So therefore, we may have to have that discussion here in open session, not executive session.
So why don't, why don't, why doesn't that question get asked at the G R C S U?
Well, not on the G R C S U.
But you can attend as a member of the public and.
I would like you to attend one more meeting.
Okay. I will ask at the G R C S U.
And you also have representatives, too, that can.
Ask questions.
Ask questions and put that as well, so.
So is the motion still rescinded?
Yeah. Thank you. Okay. All right. So, moving on. All right. The proxy?
So, do you want to explain it, Jessica? So we've already approved a vismit proxy at the Fall Conference. We need someone who also serves in that same capacity for V I. So if someone is going to be at that meeting, or if the same person who's our vismit proxy would also like to be the V I proxy, that'd be something the board would have to decide. We just have to make a determination tonight. So.
I'm going. All right.
Do we need a motion that Linda would be the V I proxy?
I'll make a motion that Linda will be the V I proxy.
On favor?
Those forms out, please.
Yeah.
The pink and the purple and the yellow, just when you have a chance.
Oh.
Yeah. Thanks.
Any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? Okay. G R C S U board update. Well, we had talked a lot of stuff in executive session on the update, so I don't think we can talk about it.
Well, I think the one thing that the board members can discuss or should talk about is the fact that the board did vote to raise the sub rate to $17 an hour effective immediately. So hopefully that will, it brings us closer to area supervisor unions and supervisor districts in terms of sub rates, and hopefully that will help, you know, alleviate some of the issues that our schools regularly face. So I don't know if there's any other items of any members of the board who would like to bring up that.
What's the area average, just out of curiosity?
It's right around, I'd say between $16 and $20, right around there, so. And we still are currently working through support staff negotiations, as well as we received a letter or a notice from the teachers, they're intent to negotiate. So we will, on October 22nd, when we have our support staff, we'll also look to start to get, to set dates for teacher negotiations as well. And that's just something to consider as you go through the budgeting process, is that we will be budgeting while we're still negotiating for both support staff as well as teachers, and the impacts that they may have, so.
Okay. Any further discussion there? Okay. Moving on to finance.
Do we discuss, see, the lawyer for G R C S U, or is that covered under, under the other one?
That was covered. We just, that was under the, that was under all. Oh, the new business, yeah. I'd love to have the, everybody take a look at the, we have, I don't know when the last Articles of Agreement were written up, but I'd love it if everybody would read it for next meeting. So if there's anything in there that needs to be looked at or talked about. I just reread mine. I thought it would be nice if everybody took a look at that, and we could bring it up and talk about it. That's the Corey Valley Articles of Agreement. Okay. So we're going to table that to next meeting, then? Yeah. Because I'd like to have a discussion about how to add more members of Corey Valley to G R C S U.
That is in the G R C S U bylaws, and that would be, that we talked about is G R C S U would have to vote to change voting membership, and then that would have to go to the State Board, so.
Yep. Thanks, Chris. All right. So now we'll move on to finance. Monthly financials.
So Louis could not make it here tonight. He apologizes, just he's dealing with a family situation this evening, so. So I think if there are any questions on the financials, feel free to just send Louis an email. I'm more than happy to respond when we can. And then for the budget discussion, as you know, we are, you know, beginning to meet with the building principals to start talking about their priorities, their needs. But what we'd like from the board, as they've done in the past, is to identify some priority areas, some goals for this budget cycle, as well as if there are certain percentages they'd like us to take a look at. And I know in the past, you've asked us to provide different scenarios at certain levels. So if there are anything that, you know, the board would like, you know, us to consider, I'm more than happy to take that, bring it back to Louis, and we'll have that ready to go for the November first draft.
Okay. All right. Personnel. Contract recommendations.
Well, I, real quick, I just want to make sure that if there are any priority areas or numbers we should be taking a look at, because I know that.
Tom, did you notice that?
Like a certain percentage?
Sure. I mean, I know that we.
Five? Do we have to vote? I mean, I don't know.
I think in the past, we've looked at different levels, and so I think whatever the board decides, so I know that's, last year, you gave us like a zero, three, and a five, and we worked on different scenarios, what that would look like, or what the impact would be. If the board liked a similar, you know, similar look, that's something which we could do, so.
Seems useful. What was that?
It seems useful in the past to have some comparison scenarios. Yeah.
Right. So I think one scenario would be either just where there's no new adds. We just, you know, with status quo, then with healthcare, I know that we just, Louis and myself were at the V S A Vasbo, which is the Vermont School Boards, School Business Officers Association. We were there the past two days. Hopefully by next week, we should have an idea what that percentage will be. The healthcare rate in the private industry is right around 20%. I know Louis had said he's budgeting at right around 15, trying to be conservative. We're hoping that it's not going to be that high. Last year, a little bit lower than that. But that's, you know, that is a driver. So one, you know, we looked at budget, the first thing we had is there's just no new adds. We're just, you know, no new positions, nothing, just here's what it is. And then if, you know, we look to see where that would take us, and if we're looking at 3%, 5%, 0%, just a level set fund, we'd have to, you know, and look at what the impacts would be in the first draft, which is something which we would, we need to know from the board.
And the papers are in there for the number, the facilities breakdown by town, and the Corey Valley Union School District Budget School Summary by town.
I do want to clarify, because I know there was some miscommunication at the last meeting, that when this was discussed in August, we did say that, you know, due to timing, whereas that we'd have it for the October meeting, which we did have, not September.
Yeah, that was my fault.
Yeah. I just wanted to just clarify.
Yeah. My big responsibility.
On that paper there, the 25 Budget School Summary, what's district-wide total?
That is all the schools combined. Because we have a Corey Valley budget, that is a budget for all five schools. Now Louis in the past can break it down, but we don't have five separate school budgets. We have a Corey Valley budget that's approved. And so that's the total budget of all five schools.
Because the way it's voted on, it's cumulative votes. So, for example, it doesn't matter how many votes are cast in each different town. What matters is how many vote for the budget and how many vote against the budget. So it's not broken down by town.
Like, I get all that, but I think I'm, maybe I'm reading it wrong. It shows Polteny 2.5, High School 2.7, and then.
Well, district-wide is going to be like special ad, Paris.
I'm sorry, Tom. I see the breakdown sheet. I apologize. So I do believe, I'll double check with those, those are for positions that work across probably two or three buildings. And so they're, well, I mean, look at wages and benefits, that would be for individuals that worked, you know, exclusively like FY '25 in West Rutland, in Proctor, and Polteny. While district-wide, maybe someone who worked across multiple buildings, as opposed to one, so.
Like interventionist, for instance.
What's that?
Like an interventionist, for instance.
Could be. Right. Yeah.
So district-wide could be IAs, interventionists. Anything else?
Well, most IAs would be S U.
Wasn't that what that is? Behavioral?
Special.
Any special I are all S U employees, so.
Okay.
And some of the interventionists are S U, some are grant funded, so there's a, they're funding of.
But that's not what's grant funded, it's the $6 million. Okay. Thank you. Well, that was the 23, but the $7 million.
So the question still remains, is we need to give the.
I'm sorry. So I'm looking at two different sheets, because I look at there's a facilities breakdown, there's also the FY '25 Budget School Summary. If you look at the district-wide total.
Thank you.
Yeah. I, like I said, I'll double check with Louis on that, and we'll have the numbers for that, just to be clear on that. We're working on two different sheets, so we'll go.
So I would request that we had zero with no changes, 3% and 5% budgets to look at at the next meeting.
So zero would be level funding, excluding health, things that we don't have.
Level funding, staff, yeah.
Things that are under our control for education.
Right. I mean, we know healthcare isn't going to be level funded.
No. Ours are going up too.
Yeah.
All right. And that will be for next meeting. Got it. Any further discussion on that? All right.
Just, if there are budget questions that, as you come across, you want to ask at the meeting, you know, please feel free to reach out to myself or Louis beforehand, so we can have the information ready to go as well.
All right. Moving on to personnel. Contract recommendations.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract recommendations as presented.
What's the stipend going to be?
For the mentoring, is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yep.
So this came up in the.
Go ahead.
I was going to say, this came up in the G R C S U board meeting as well, and I know I spoke with Debbie Dembrakis, that in moving forward, may want to provide what that range is. So there is a range in which the mentors can receive. So there's a low end, on the high end. It's just based upon the number of hours that they work. So it is capped. So it's not just we're making this up as we go along. It really is dependent upon the hours that they work throughout the course with their mentors. And a lot of these individuals, you know, I explained this at West Wells Springs, as well as Rutland Town, past two nights, these stipends, they may be working with an individual in another district. So you may have one individual who's mentoring someone at, say, Milltown Springs, and the reason why it appears here is because we approve it, but then we get a bill back from Wells Springs. And I talked to Louis about it. There's a cleaner way of doing this moving forward as well. So it's just, it seems kind of like a shell game, just to make sure that really if the bill is eventually going to be, say, on Corey Valley, then we should be looking to see what we're really approving what we're paying for. Because some of these individuals, it's a wash, because we'll be receiving the stipend from another district.
It's like an average stipend they get.
It was not, when she first said it, I think it ranged from $475 to $900, and she had it tiered out, based on the teacher and the number of hours. She provided a handout when they, this first started.
Right. And I think to clarify would just be, and I think Debbie Dembrakis is fine with that, just putting that range, stipend DVD and have that range, so you know, here's what the max would be, but understanding that it depends on the amount of work that they put forth.
We asked the G R C S U to provide that document, so that could be uploaded to the resource folder for Corey Valley as well.
Yeah. We'll do for.
Okay. Motion to approve the recommendations. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Any general public comments? General public anywhere? Future meeting date? Future meeting date is November 14th. Items? And then we have a need to go to executive session?
Yes, but we need to state what that's for, because there are very specific rules around what we're going into.
What we talked about at G R C S U, we had to take it into executive session.
That was a G R C S U.
Right. Can't we do an update to Corey Valley on the things we discussed?
You're the one that made it, Linda, so you need to, you're the one to say it.
I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session to talk about what we talked about at G R C S U in executive session, to update the Corey Valley board members.
Personnel negotiations, right?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just don't want us getting.
Yes, I know. Thank you.
Any violations?
For having my back. Thank you.
Rebecca, I will send you a link.
Should we go into executive session?
Yes. Who will be going in executive session? At 6:49.